I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, February 8th, 2016, and the time is 7:05 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Okay, in the table file tonight, we have the report of the Subcommittee on Board Appointments, and so there's a copy of that report. And then there are also a couple of other items, including items, two items for information, which would include follow-up on the Discipline Policies and Procedures Work Session, and then an update on the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative Implementation. So both of those items would be added for items for information.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, we now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. We will move on then to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes from the regular school board meeting held on Monday, January 25th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff, second, second by Ellen. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, January 15th, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, and we have several this evening. First of all, our Northfield Area Learning Center, the ALC, recently received news that they've been awarded the 2016 MAAP Program of the Year. MAAP is the Minnesota Association of Alternative Programs. It's comprised of over 300 ALCs, charter schools, online programs, and other learning alternatives. The ALC will be receiving the award at the upcoming MAP State Conference in Duluth on February 11th. The criteria that was used for selecting the ALC from the nominations received included that the programmer school must provide a model in leadership, curriculum, structure, outreach, outcomes, and innovation for which other schools and programs can take inspiration. Second, that the programmer school should reflect the vision and mission of MAAP, and the programmer school should have an active MAAP members on the staff. So to celebrate this honor back at home, the ALC is planning on an open house reception on February the 24th. It will be held from 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock on the second floor at Longfellow. So it's a great opportunity for people to see all the positive things that are going on with the program and what the ALC is all about. So hopefully folks will be able to attend and an opportunity to talk to folks about their award. Second, we'd like to congratulate the Northfield High School Concert Choir. They've been selected as one of the groups to perform for the 11th Annual ACDA of Minnesota Concordia University-St. Paul Corral Arts Finale on Sunday, April 17th, 2016. And again, congratulations to Kyle Eastman and his choir members. We'd also like to congratulate our 2016 Fluid Power Challenge, which was concluded on January the 26th. There were two Northfield Middle School teams that took home awards. The groups were judged based on their design portfolio, judge interview, and machine function. The group of Clara Peterson, Alexandra Peterson, Roman Kopp, and Marcus Hock took home the award for teamwork champions. That was a combination of an interview on a portfolio. They had a perfect score in their interview and a near-perfect score on their design portfolio. The group of Greta Foster, Bella Smith, and Eric Fredrickson were the overall champions in the event. Their combined score in the three areas was enough to make them overall winners of the competition. So congratulations to both these teams of outstanding students at the middle school. We'd also like to thank the Wellness Committee for planning wellness activities for each building on February 1st. And especially, we'd also like to thank our school nurses for organizing and helping the staff with the Red Cross Blood Drive that was also held on that day. And a number of units were collected, 25, I think to be exact, which evidently each pint of blood actually creates and supports 75. Excuse me, each pint supports three people, so the impact is, it impacts 75 folks from 25 donations. So again, appreciate that. And then finally, I know Rob, I think you've seen this, but State Farm's Good Neighbors Program recently recognized Northfield Promise. Through this effort, resources have been pulled together to support AmeriCorps Promise fellows in the schools. Success of the program has helped the district improve its graduation rates and serves as a role model for other areas of the state. So just pass that around, see if anybody else would like to see that. And that is the announcements that I have this evening.
All right, board members, is there anything anyone would like to add?
I just wanted to add, congratulations to Kim Briskie and her staff. Oh my gosh, they did an amazing job of transferring the iPads from the old iPad to the iPad Airs. And it just, it was crazy good how it was all organized and implemented. And no surprise, but we realize how much behind-the-scenes work that takes to make that all happen. And the reviews I'm hearing on iPad Airs are quite excellent. The students seem to really like them, and they also like the slimmer case. So the unit itself is much slimmer, and so I've just heard nothing but positive things. So thanks to Kim and her staff. Yes, absolutely.
I think a very impressive piece of data is that they flipped out about 2,500 iPads between eight and, or 750 and 850, and within 40 minutes, 1,100 of those devices were set up and checked in with the system. And so our network manager, Nate Knudsen, and our Director of Technology Services, Kim Briskie, were just really excited to see that the system could handle all of that. So, but it was well organized. And then coming up next week, we have the Middle School Exchange, 900, but we are talking about a different age students and a little bit of a different level of support need. So great job by everybody there. Thank you for recognizing them.
Absolutely. We have no doubts the middle school will easily go as well. Okay, so let's move on to item for discussion. The first discussion is candidates to fill school board vacancy. I want to provide a little context to the appointment process, as well as read the Subcommittee report, and then we'll open it up for full discussion by board members. So as many of you are aware, in the past, when the board has had a member resign, there was a process approved by the board to make the appointment. In this case, however, as a result of the new 2015 state statutes, our board appointment process has required a number of new elements. Because Ann Maples' resignation came with less than a year left in her term, per the statute, we are able to appoint someone to fill the remainder of her unexpired term, which is 11 months. There is one requirement of these statutes that I also want to be sure to highlight. When we get to the appointment vote, I want to emphasize that in the event that none of the nominees receives the majority of the vote, in this case, a minimum of four votes, the school district will be required to immediately move to a special election. The district would incur the entire cost of this special election of around $12,000. Tonight's public hearing was required as a part of this process set forth in this new statute. In my view, this hearing provided an excellent opportunity for board members to hear directly from the applicants and their supporters. In addition, board members have had all of the applications for thorough review. As part of the process, the board also appointed a Subcommittee to do an initial review of the applications, and based on this review, recommend applicants for the board's full consideration. Board members on the Subcommittee were Margaret Colangelo, Jeff Quinell, and myself. As a committee, we developed a report summarizing our work, and I would like to present that now. At the January 11, 2016 board meeting, the board approved the process for filling the school board vacancy created by Ann Maples' resignation in accordance with the new 2015 state statutes. The person appointed by the board will serve the remainder of her unexpired term through the first Monday of January 2017. We are pleased that four people applied for the position, Mike Bertelson, Fritz Bogot, Ray Cox, and Dale Garing. First, we want to thank all of the applicants. Each of the applicants brought valuable experience making the choice for a recommendation, an extremely difficult one. To briefly summarize, all four of the candidates are parents of current or former students in our district. Two are former school board members. One has volunteered extensively in the schools and at the district level, and one whose extensive community involvement, both directly and indirectly, impacts the school district. We greatly appreciate each of the applicant's willingness to serve on this board. The Subcommittee in our work set out to establish criteria for reviewing the applicants and for making a recommendation to the whole board. Because this is an 11-month appointment, we developed and utilized criteria to reflect this relatively short time period. The criteria we used were as follows. Demonstrated commitment to and advocacy for the school district and public education. Experience working within a group in a committee, task force, or board-type setting. Active involvement in current school operations and challenges. And finally, most prepared to step in and provide useful insight into the immediate issues facing the school district in the next 11 months. The Subcommittee then did an extensive review of each of the four applicants based on the information they provided in their applications using this established criteria. As a result of this process, the Subcommittee felt that Fritz Bogot and Ray Cox deserved the board's full consideration. Although board members have been given the applications of all four of the candidates, below we highlight each of the two applicants, as well as the rationale for the recommendation. Fritz Bogot has been actively involved in the Northfield Schools since 2017. He was an active, 2007, sorry, thank you. He was an active volunteer at Civilly Elementary, where he focused his efforts on helping struggling students. In 2011, his wife and he started Accelerate Northfield. To date, this program has provided 15,600 tutoring hours in Northfield Schools with no incremental expense to the district. He is currently serving at the district level as a member of the D-PAC Assessment Subcommittee, as well as serving on both the Reading Action Team and Communications Committee for the Northfield Promise Initiative. He is an active supporter of public education at the state level and has worked with Parents United for Public Schools and Schools for Equity in Education in an effort to influence education policy. In summary, Fritz is highly engaged in the district, which has given him a strong working knowledge of the most pressing issues facing our schools. It is his extensive involvement and understanding of the district's current challenges that the Subcommittee believes puts him in an excellent position to provide meaningful insight into the issues facing the board over the next 11 months. Ray Cox served on the Northfield Board for 15 years, from 1987 to 2002, including some years as Board Chair. He is a parent of three children that all matriculated through the Northfield Schools, as did he. He was actively involved in his children's school activities, including band, rock and roll revival, as well as several sports. During his tenure on the board, he hired two superintendents, several principals, and put in place $100 million of facility bond improvements. He has broad experience with board governance with a variety of organizations, including Community Action Center and the Strategic Planning Board for Conservation Minnesota. In summary, over the course of his 15 years on the school board, Ray was involved in a number of critical decisions that helped shape our district today. His experience serving on the board of a number of community organizations has provided him with an excellent understanding of how to work effectively within a board structure and as a community leader. It is his depth of experience that the Subcommittee believes puts him in a strong position to provide meaningful insight into the issues facing the board over the next 11 months. Because of the strong field of applicants, the Subcommittee wants to again emphasize how extremely difficult it was to determine whom it would ultimately recommend for the appointment. It is the hope that the work of the Subcommittee in establishing the criteria and then evaluating each of the applicants based on this criteria has been helpful to the board as we together make this critically important decision. So with that, I would like to first ask the two Subcommittee members if they have any comments, and then as a board, we will look to have a good discussion. Jeff, or Margaret?
As far as a comment, four candidates, all good candidates. And I think in a situation like this, it's just, it's just nice to see the people come up and then put their name in the hat. So I think all four candidates are good candidates for school boards. I just thank them for applying.
I echo what Jeff said. I think we're extremely fortunate to have four outstanding candidates put their hat, put their name in the ring. It was a very difficult decision. I think all of the four would make outstanding members for an 11-month period, so it was hard to come up with a recommendation of the four. So again, thank you so very much to all of you.
Okay, other board members? Questions, comments, discussion? Rob?
Okay, I'll go. First of all, I wanted to say that the one thing that I'm sad about actually is that it will change the gender balance on the school board tonight, but other than that, I'm really pleased with the four candidates that we have. I think we're fortunate in Northfield to have a community that as a whole cares so deeply about the quality of the public schools and produces such outstanding community leaders as the four applicants here this evening. Just want to say a couple words about each one because...
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm personally very grateful to Dale Garing for his important role as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in solidifying the city's support for a new skateboard park. He was unwavering in his support for the project and, and of Northfield's youth, and I'm sure he would continue to be a strong advocate for Northfield's youth as a member of the school board. Both Mike Bertelson and Ray Cox have previously served on the school board, as we've heard. Although their combined years of service as board members doesn't quite add up to Knowles, it is nonetheless impressive. It is not easy being an elected official in Northfield, and I admire their willingness to step forward and undertake the responsibility one more time. Both Mike and Ray are extremely knowledgeable about finances and facilities, two areas which are among the most important and most frequent issues the school board addresses. As we navigate the master facilities plan, both men would bring ample knowledge, experience, and common sense to the table. Fritz Bogot also possesses professional expertise that would serve the district well in its master facilities planning process. He has broad knowledge and experience of both the Northfield Public Schools and the local charter schools, one of which will be requesting reauthorization from the board in a few weeks. Finally, his role in founding and guiding Accelerate Northfield, which earned him and his wife an Northfield Education Association Friend of Education Award in 2013, demonstrates his deep personal commitment to improving public education in Northfield and to eliminating the achievement gap, surely one of the most important tasks facing us here in Minnesota. I would be honored to serve with any of the four applicants and thank them for putting their names forward for this position.
Thank you. Excellent remarks. Other board members? Ellen?
So I wanted to first thank the board members that served on the Subcommittee. I'm really grateful that you took the time and shared your thoughts on the candidates. And I want to thank all the community members that applied. This is, as other board members have said, we're really, really fortunate to have such a quality set of applicants. It's a really good problem to have in front of us. So like my other board members, I've spent a great deal of time reviewing applicants and thinking about the needs of the district in making these appointments. And I agree with the Subcommittee that Fritz's passion and commitment to education is highly valued and would allow him to contribute a unique perspective as a board member, and I would be honored to serve with him. However, I also recognize from my own experience that even with D-PAC and considerable other district volunteer experience, there's a learning curve to becoming an effective board member. There just is. So given the short appointment duration, I was looking at the two applicants who had previous school board experience, for whom would not have this type of a learning curve. And both Ray and Mike have that previous school board experience. And I would be, like Rob said, honored to serve with Ray, with Mike, and with Dale. And Dale has served on a number of other boards and commissions, and so, again, we're just so lucky to have this problem in front of us. But in looking at this, Mike really has the most recent board experience, as well as serving on the District Finance Committee through December of 2012. And through these more recent experiences and his continued connections to the schools, he has an understanding of the current landscape of education and has existing relationships with administrators and staff. I served with Mike on the board, and I valued Mike's ability to bring his experience in strategic planning by providing frameworks that really guided board discussions. From his experience managing a $200 million budget, Mike brought this deep knowledge of financial stewardship. His management experience with different employee groups also allowed him to contribute insights in valuing our most important resource, which is the people. In our overlapping tenure, I highly valued the manner Mike articulated these thoughts and his insights. In the short duration of the appointment we were called on to fill, Mike would immediately be able to bring these strengths against the board, and his previous board experience would make, be able to make those sort of immediate and strong contributions.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? No?
I want to express my appreciation to the Subcommittee for the work that they did and really thank them for that, and then to the candidates that have agreed to be considered for the board appointment. Thank you for your input to us also. Thank you.
Is there any other comments that board members would like to make before we move on to the item for individual action next on the agenda, which is to vote on the appointment, followed by a vote of office? Other comments? I already said something. Jeff?
Personal bias, I think, I mean, I know Mike served on the board, you know, I mean, all good, good people. I think what I'm trying to find is one thing I don't want to give us in a situation of special election. I mean, I know we could end up there. So, I mean, I've known, I don't know, Fritz, I know he's a good, good guy. I know all the other, Dale, Ray. I think that coming in, nine months from now, we have an election for four seats, and one is just, you know, the one we're talking about, could just be open. And I know that Ray Cox has said he's not wanting to run for anything after that, so that would be, just would leave an open seat. So I think with, you know, it'd be nice with the experience that Ray has had on the school board and facilities and a lot of things, I mean, I think they're all qualified candidates to, to, you know, take a shot at the 11 months. And then, you know, I think the other three are good, good candidates for, for the election coming up here with four seats and at the end of the, already in nine months here, November. And I think it's just, just the way that things go here, I know we need, you know, we need four votes, we need to move that on, so I mean, we're going to nominate and go from there, but I just, and I don't know how that's going to go, so I just, you know, I hope that we just don't end up with a special election, because I just think that that's a waste of money for the taxpayer, and I just don't want that. I would just honestly like to see that as an open seat when we're done. Not only the intent of the other candidates, but I know that Ray just wants to do that for the, for the 11 months. So I guess that's kind of my comment. I just hope that we don't end up here in gridlock.
Okay, is there any other comments board members would like to make? So let's move on to the item for individual action, which is filling the school board vacancy by appointment. Before we proceed, I would like to review how we will proceed with the vote. The vote will be done via a nomination process. I will begin by taking nominations. Nominations are open to all four of the applicants. If a board member wishes to nominate one of the applicants, raise your hand to be acknowledged by the chair and then state your nomination. Nominations do not require a second. I will continue to call for nominations until there are no further nominations. Hearing no further nominations, board members would have an opportunity to have one final comment about the nominees, but then we would proceed with a roll call vote on each of the nominees in the order in which they were nominated. And as a point of clarification, each of the nominees is a separate vote. Therefore, as we move through the voting process, the first nominee to get four votes will become the appointed board member. And again, to just echo what Jeff said, I also want to remind board members that the new 2015 state statute regarding school board vacancy requires that in the event none of the nominees receives the majority of the vote, in this case, a minimum of four votes, the school district will be required to hold a special election. The district would incur the entire cost, around $12,000, to hold the selection. So before we move on, are there any questions about the nomination process or voting procedure? I understand it's a little bit different than the way we've done votes, so if board members want to take their time to consider questions, we, I don't want to proceed and tell everyone really understands how the nomination process will work. Margaret?
Earlier, we had had some discussion about possibly moving that we could have a second round of voting, should we become gridlocked. Is that not possible?
No, what we will do, what we need to do initially is open up the nomination process. What we would potentially consider then as a motion, if we were to have three nominees, we would, before voting, process a motion that would allow us to move to a second round of votes with the top two nominees. So I will explain that if we get to the point where we have three nominees. Thank you. Other questions? Everyone's clear on how we'll proceed? Okay, so let's proceed with the nomination process. So I will ask now for nominations to fill the vacancy on the Northfield Board of Education and to serve the remainder of the unexpired term ending the first Monday in January 2017. Jeff?
I nominate Ray Cox.
Okay, Ray Cox is nominated. Other nominations, excuse me, nominations. Margaret?
I nominate Fritz Bogot.
Fritz Bogot is nominated. Other nominations? Ellen?
I nominate Mike Bertelson.
Mike Bertelson is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing no further nominations without objection, nominations are closed. Before we proceed to the vote, we do now have the following nominees. We will vote on them in the following order. Ray Cox, Fritz Bogot, Mike Bertelson. Before proceeding on to the vote, there is an opportunity for comment, if any board members would like to make a final comment. No? Okay. So because there are three nominees, as Margaret had alluded to, we need to consider the possibility that none of the nominees would receive a majority of the votes, a minimum of four votes. If this were to occur, we would be required by state statute to immediately proceed to a special election. Therefore, I would like to recommend that before we proceed with the vote, the board considers approving the process of proceeding immediately with another vote on the two nominees that received the highest number of votes. This vote would give one of the two nominees another opportunity to receive a majority vote, thereby avoiding a special election. We need to approve this process in the form of a motion before we proceed with the vote. So is there a motion in the event that is a result of the impending vote on the three nominees? If none of the nominees receives a majority of vote, a minimum of four votes, the board would proceed immediately to another vote on the two nominees who receive the most votes. Moved by Ellen, second. Second by Margaret. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now ready to move to the vote on the following nominees in this order. Ray Cox, Fritz Bogot, and Mike Bertelson. These votes are a roll call vote, so we will begin with the vote on Ray Cox. Erin?
Hardy.
No. No.
Iverson?
No.
Colangelo?
No.
Quinell?
Yes.
Stratmon?
No.
Pritchard?
No.
Okay, that nominee does not prevail. We will move on to the next nominee, Fritz Bogot. Again, a roll call vote. Hardy?
Yes.
Iverson?
No.
Colangelo?
Yes.
Quinell?
No.
Stratmon?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
That candidate prevails. Our nominee prevails. So as a result of the vote, Fritz Bogot is now appointed to the board. As part of the process laid out in the 2015 state statutes, we are required to proceed with a formal resolution filling the school board vacancy by appointment. So I will read that resolution. Whereas a vacancy occurs in the office of school board member with the term expiring the first Monday in January 2017, and whereas less than one year remains in the unexpired term and the vacancy has not occurred within 90 days of the next school district general election, and whereas a public hearing on the appointment has been held pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 123B, Point 09, Subdivision 4, and whereas Fritz Bogot meets the qualifications established by Minnesota law to serve as a school board member. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board... Now, therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 659 State of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to the Minnesota Statute Section 123D. Point zero nine subdivision five, Fritz Bogot is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy and to serve the remainder of the unexpired term, ending the first Monday in January 2017, and until a successor is elected and qualifies. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Moved by Ellen, second.
Second.
Second by Bob. This is also a roll call vote. So Erin, Hardy?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Colangelo?
Yes.
Quinell?
Yes.
Stratmon?
Yes.
Pritchard? Yes. Motion carries. Um, I also, uh, want the record to reflect that the names and addresses of the public officials that were notified of the appointment will be entered into the minutes of the meeting. So we'll move on to the second item for, um, individual action, and that would be the oath of office. So if Fritz Bogot would, um, come forward and we will administer that. So if you raise your hand, I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District 659 to the best of my judgment and ability. Okay. So, we can now move forward. We're doing thought exchange. Um, are they waiting in queue for?
We're hooking up with them right now.
Okay. So we might take a moment to have them come forward. Um.
Jen, are you there?
I've just been texting with them to let them know we're.
Okay. The fortunate thing is they're two, they're on the west coast, so it's not getting nearly as late for them.
This is true.
Hi, Matt, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Jen. Can you hear us?
I can see that you've joined the meeting, but I can't hear anything on your end.
Can you hear us yet?
I think I can hear you now.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Can you hear us, Jen? We had actually tested this.
Hello?
It's not looking good.
Hi for her, just one second. We had tested it twice. Why do we always have to do that? Just change the cord. That was my fault. There we go.
Hi, Matt.
Can you hear us now again?
I can.
Sorry about that. I made a change of the cord. Wrong move. Sorry about that. All right, Jen, we are here and ready to go now.
Um, hi, everybody. Um, I'm here with a couple of people from our team. Steve Anderson, who, um, has been working closely on the project, and then another team member, Laurent Fono, who's, um, going to be listening in on the call. Um, first, can I check in? Can you see my screen okay?
We can.
Yes.
Great. Um, Matt, before I get started, do you want me to tighten up the timeframe? I know we're starting a little bit later than we originally thought.
Yep, you're fine. Take the normal time that you thought.
Okay, that's great.
The two, two hours will be plenty. No, we're just kidding. Everyone, we told her about 20 to 25 minutes.
Now we're getting the defibrillator out.
That's right.
Okay.
All right. Okay, well, we'll jump right in and get started. So first, thank you to everyone for having us join you tonight. We're looking forward to sharing some results. And, um, we are happy to stop at any point and answer questions. So, you know, you don't have to wait till the end of the presentation to answer, to ask questions. Feel free to jump in. Matt and I tested the connection earlier today, and I believe I can hear all of you from where you are. So, um, just ask away as, as you, as you, if there's any confusion on anything. Okay, so we ran our thought exchange between November and December, um, before Christmas. And we had 10 thought exchange processes. And the process included parents, uh, community members, staff, and students. And so what happened was we ran, uh, an individual process for each of the schools, and then also had a district process for staff who were not associated with a particular building, as well as, uh, people from the community who didn't have children in, in a school but wanted to participate. And we went through three steps, and I'm hoping that, uh, most of you participated in at least a part of the process. I'll go through what the steps were just to make everyone familiar with it, and feel free to ask questions if you need clarification. The first step that we do is the share step. And so that is the step where you see a few open ended questions and you get to share your thoughts. Um, and the three questions, um, I'll talk about in a minute. But we were looking at a very, very broad reflection back on, you know, what's happening at the schools and in the district. Um, when that, when that step closes, our team looks at all of the thoughts. There's some, a person, a real person reads every single thought. And we moderate those thoughts to remove thoughts that, um, are rude or hurtful. Um, and, and we do that to keep the process safe for the people who are participating. So if there are things like, you know, rude language or, um, anything that, that might be hurtful to someone, um, is removed so that when people get into the star step, which is the second step, uh, they can focus on the content and not an emotional response to thoughts that they're seeing. And so the star step allows people to read their thoughts beside the thoughts of other people and start to learn from each other. They start to, it's more of a conversation. The first, the first step feels a little bit like a survey. This step during the star step, we learn from each other from understanding other people's perspectives, and we assign stars to the thoughts. And, and what that does is it brings, brings the thoughts that resonate with the broader community up to the top. Those thoughts receive the most stars. Of course, we can't see all of the thoughts, so each person sees a subset of the thoughts that were submitted. Um, and each of the thoughts are seen approximately the same number of times. Once that step closed, we, our team does some analysis behind the scenes. And now we are in what we call our discover step. And so this meeting is part of that discover process. Um, and it, it began with a meeting with Chris and Matt and looking at the results. And then, um, meeting with the principals and meeting with the board. And then we'll talk a little bit later about rolling the results out to the public and what that might look like. Are there any questions about the steps?
We're not seeing any questions, Jen.
Okay, great. These are the questions that we ask. The first question, what are some concerns you have about our school this year? Followed by, what are some things you appreciate about our school this year? And then our third question was very open, what questions do you have about our school or district? Um, and just to see, you know, what things came up and, um, and, uh, to help, you know, to help guide some of the communications that might be needed, um, in, within the district. Overall, uh, we had 1,104 unique people participate. So that would include people who only participated in the share step, only participated in the star step, or who participated in both, in both steps. So that's unique people. Collectively, they contributed 2,320 thoughts and assigned six, just over 61,500 stars.
Excuse me, could I interrupt with a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, for a community of our size, do you feel that that's a good representative sample?
Yeah, that's a great question. So one of the ways to look at it, um, people have a tendency to think of it as a survey and say, well, is, you know, what's the response rate for a survey? Um, and what we encourage you to do is think of it more as a conversation and think about, you know, how many people would you have, uh, come out to a town hall meeting, for example, or parent meetings at the schools? And consider, consider, you know, what the result is compared to what you would normally see in your district. So I'm not sure what your, and I don't know Matt and Chris if you talked about it, I don't know what your regular numbers would be.
We, we talked about much, much smaller, Jen, in terms of. And in fact, some meetings where we had, when we were discussing some issues here over the last year, we might have two or three people show up for a meeting. And so the, the combined numbers of all of, of the meetings we had in, concerning the facilities issue.
If you think about the combination of all the transformational technology meetings and all of the facilities meetings that we've held over the last three years, I would venture to say, and I think this is reasonable, we had less than 150 people participate. And probably would, I'm, I'm going to guess 43 meetings if I count. Because we have, we've done 27 meetings on facilities alone. And then we did two rounds of the trans tech meetings, so probably 30 meetings. So we had maybe 150 people at 30 meetings, Jen. So while I did not major in mathematics, 1,100 is better.
This is significantly higher.
And, and this is a good number for this type of information gathering. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other thing I would say, just in terms of when you're looking at who is participating, um, a lot of times, you know, when we have in-person meetings, it can be difficult for some people to get out to the meetings if it conflicts with their work or if they have childcare problems. Um, and also at many in-person meetings, there are people who are competent in standing up in front of a group and speaking, and those are the people whose voices we hear over and over. And so in a setting like this, it's more common to hear from the people who we don't always hear from as well. So the people who aren't necessarily comfortable standing up in a group will still come and contribute in this type of environment. So, um, you know, you're, you're very likely sampling through the broader range of, of people as well. This was the demographic breakdown of those people who participated. So 72% of the people who responded were parents or guardians. 13% were staff members. And 13% identified themselves as being both a parent or guardian and a staff member. So maybe they work at one school and have students in another, that kind of thing. We had a very small number of community members, students, and people who identified as other. And this would be a, you know, a reasonably common breakdown. It, it's typically, you know, a higher number of parents who respond, um, followed by staff. And, and it's very common for that community, um, community member group to be quite tiny, actually.
And Jen, if I could just make a quick comment on that. You know, we have been really trying to find a way to get at people who don't have children in the community, or, excuse me, don't have children in the school, yet are members of our community. And so, um, this is a piece, as you know, we are looking at doing additional thought exchanges. So we have been working with a number of groups, and in fact, Erin and I, we, we had sent the invitation out through the Northfield Chamber of Commerce listserv. We had sent it out through the Northfield Rotary Listserv. Um, we had used the newspaper. There was a self-registration component, um, the HCI Listserv. Uh, since then, Erin and I have brainstormed a, a couple of other pretty large lists that when we do this piece again, specifically if it's around facilities, we really are interested in getting that group of people who don't have children in the district's feelings on these topics. And so I also think that it could be the nature of the topic. This is about the schools, and I think some people could say, well, I don't have a kid in school, so maybe I shouldn't, you know, respond to this. But when we move to something that is more focused on facilities, I think that's going to generate some additional interest in people who aren't necessarily directly connected to the school. Thanks, John. I'm sorry about that.
No, that's great. So we're going to go through some of the results together. We, you know, we have limited time. So, um, what we're going to do is we're going to start at a high level looking at sort of the themes of the thoughts, and then bring it down to a more detailed look at the web report, which will show us the individual thoughts themselves within the different themes. And then we'll have a quick conversation at the end about, um, what happens next and where we go from here. So when we do our analysis, as I mentioned before, there were 10 processes for, uh, the thought exchange. And we look at the school level first. Um, and we take the top thoughts from each of those schools, and we pull them into a district-wide, uh, a, a district-wide analysis. So we, we take those top thoughts and we, and we theme them to understand what topics people are talking about the most. And so I've got, um, I've just got a quick chart here to give you some overarching themes that we use to, to, to pull the thoughts into the themes. And this, I just want to mention in terms of numbers, for those of you who are, um, very quantitative, that the numbers don't add up to that 65,000 that we saw in that, uh, earlier slide because this is a selection of the top thoughts from each of the schools. Um, so the thoughts, when I say top thoughts, I mean the, the thoughts that were assigned the most stars by the people who participated. So you see, we get this, um, very strong appreciation for teachers, staff, and leadership. So the orange bar, uh, is showing the number of stars that were assigned to thoughts associated with that topic. Um, in the appreciates question, and the purple, uh, gives you the number of stars that were assigned to the top thoughts in the concerns question. Uh, this is, think, you can think of this slide almost as a roadmap. It gives us, uh, just a broad, broad brush stroke of what the topics are. It's different than a survey in that, um, concerns are not all negative. And what I mean when I say that is, I'm a parent and I have a son in grade, in the third grade. And I might be concerned, for example, about bullying at his school. Now, I might think that the school is doing fabulous things with bullying, but as a parent, I may still have concerns about that. So when I'm asked to provide my concerns, I'm going to say that I'm concerned about bullying. I may have also put a, a comment in the appreciates question about that. But it's, it's something that I'm concerned about. So I just wanted to sort of mention that in terms of understanding that it's not, these are the things that the school, schools and districts are doing well, and these are the things that the schools and districts are not doing well. It's just the things I appreciate and the things I'm concerned about.
Um, no.
Yep. Ellen?
So I, I had a question, if you can hear me. Um, I was curious. So this kind of gives you a weighted perception of, um, people's sort of appreciation and concerns. Is there a way to look at sort of the unweighted, where you just look at, um, if, if everybody just had one vote versus, you know, because, because some people might have chose to put lots of stars on one thing and whereas other people might have.
You're going to love the charts, Ellen.
Oh, good.
Wait till you see the chart.
I am going to answer that question, but if you don't mind, I'm going to wait just for a moment until we go into our web report, and I'll answer it there. Because we'll have a visual to go with it, so it'll be.
Perfect.
Any other questions while I'm here?
Other questions, board members? I think you can move forward.
Okay, great. Um, so what we, these are, when I say summary themes, when we go into the web report, what you'll see is that there are themes that don't match these titles. Um, and they're, uh, they're just one level of detail further in. Um, and what we've done is we've taken those, those subthemes or, you know, main themes, and we've grouped them together to create this summary table, just to give you sort of a, a big picture of what's going on. So now I am going to take us into the web report, and you will, uh, be able to, um, get the answer to your questions. So these links are in the PDF that I sent you. And I believe that you have, this file has been sent to you already. Have you all got this?
The, the board didn't get this.
The PDF?
They did not get, they got the PDF of the slides, but they did not get the PDF of this screen yet. I will send that out afterwards here.
Okay.
I didn't know, I forgot, I did not know you wanted me to send those links to them, Jen.
No, it's totally, it's, I didn't expect you to, so I would have been clear if I wanted you to. But what I am just going to say is that on this slide in the PDF, you'll see that there are. are three web links here. And so I've included, I've got them all open on the internet here, that I'm going to go through them, but I just wanted to highlight that there's three web reports, and two of them are, the results are shown within the themes. I included a third web report with no themes, so you can look at just the thoughts in order of what came to the top. And we are going to start by looking at the web report by school. This is what the web report looks like. You'll come in and you'll see there are three questions. I'm going to, I'm going to talk about some highlights here, but I'm also going to walk you through how to look at the web report, so that you can go into it on your own after this conversation, and dig into the results a little bit more. So we'll start by looking at some things you appreciate about our school this year. And when you click on that, I'm in the web report that's divided by school, so you can choose which school you want to look at. And for now, I'm going to select all. There's also the option to filter the results by satisfaction. And again, I'm going to select all, so that we're looking at all the thoughts here. And what you'll see is that we've got a list of themes on the left, and each of them can be expanded to see individual thoughts. And within each of these, within each of these themes, when we're looking at the thoughts, it is, right now it's sorted by stars. So we are looking at, you know, at the top of the list, the things that were assigned the most stars. I can also choose to sort by the number of people who starred this item, as well as by passion. And so, stars, stars gives you an indication of how important this thought was overall to the people who saw it. And I just want to go back to the, between the share and the star step, you're seeing, when you participate in the star, you're seeing thoughts that were submitted by people from your...
Jen, Jen, if we could take just a minute, I think people are going to want to gather around the screen so that they can all see it, because I think it's far enough away that I see little red dots and little blue dots, and that's about it. And I realize I'm the oldest, I'm the oldest, except almost the oldest person in the room, and therefore we need to do that. So, and then give us just a second, give us a second to move over and then. I can make it a little bit bigger.
It is. Is that, can you see that? I'm trying to blow up the tag a little bit.
That's better.
That's better?
Go ahead, Jen.
So, the teachers and staff, as we saw from the earlier summary chart, was the thing that rose to the surface in terms of what people appreciate. So that's a great vote of confidence for your teachers. And you can read through the thoughts that people submitted. And, right now, I don't have this filtered by school, but I could decide that I wanted to look at, for example, Northfield High School only, and then I would see just the thoughts that came from that school. So those first two thoughts were actually from that school. So when you dig into those thoughts, you'll be able to really spend some time exploring what is here. We're not going to go into a great level of detail, because it does take some time. People usually want to read the thoughts and really understand what's happening. You'll see here, and this I think is, the woman who answered it asked a question on the earlier slide, passion is, I think, what you're possibly interested in. And passion looks at the average numbers of, number of stars assigned. It's not across the board. It's for people who chose to assign stars to this thought, how many stars they assigned. So it doesn't include the zeros. So, for the people who starred this thought, how passionate were they about this thought? And you can see here, there's not, there's a lot of, a lot of thoughts in that three, you know, three range, two to three. But with some things, you'll see, you'll see perhaps a broader, a broader range of thoughts. So you'll see, you know, this is in the four, close to the four, oh, not finding one with a big range. But you'll sometimes see a range between, you know, close to five stars on some thoughts, you know, and only maybe two, two stars on another thought. And so, it just shows how passionate people were about that topic.
Jen, if I could stop for just a second. So, again, if I'm reading this and I'm looking at your item number one that's on the screen right now, that has 53 sorted by stars, 16 people, and a level of passion of 3.2, what we're really saying there is, when we look at how many people assigned stars to that particular thought, it were just 16 people. And out of 16 people, they assigned 53 thoughts, or 53 stars, to that thought, so in order to get that to happen, they have to have, on average, have to have more than three stars being given by each of the 16 people.
Correct.
Is that another way to say the same thing?
Yes.
So, it's the concept of saying, you really have to look at how many people gave it a star, or star, one star or more, then how many stars they gave, which then creates the level of passion for the particular thought.
I think that's an important piece, because, you know, each of these thoughts was submitted by one individual. And then basically, it's the people who saw them, and then that number 16 there are the people who started, and then essentially the average stars that they assigned it. So, that's what's kind of cool about this, is it's very grassroots in nature, in that everyone's thoughts had a similar number of people see them. And so, one thing that we really are, I'll use the word jazzed about, is that oftentimes the school leaders, we hear, well, everyone's talking about this issue, or everyone's concerned about this. What this does is it allows us to see, you know, is that really true, number one, and many times it is, sometimes it's not. And then it gives us a little bit of background. You will, as you look at the reports, there are going to be times where there are multiple thoughts that are similar to one another, in terms of, and that's why Thought Exchange clusters these into a certain area, so we can kind of see the themes. And that's, that's a key piece, is I've dug into this data more than I would like to admit. You know, the fact is, there are lots of thoughts that you could say, oh, they're similar, but they're just a little bit off, or they're just a little bit different. And so I think it is something, as we look at it, it's going to be very valuable for us in leading some additional discussions around those topics. Thanks, Jen.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. So, I'm not sure, and Matt and Chris, maybe you can help me with this, how much time you would like me to spend looking at the web reports? I think it's worth looking at, having a quick look at the two other questions as well, just to get an idea of some of the things that are there.
I think we could take another 10, 15 minutes if you need it.
Okay, okay. So, the, we like to look at appreciates first, because of course, it's always nice to see some positive comments to start with. This is looking at the concerns, and again, you know, we can filter by school. I've chosen to look at all of the responses, just to give you a better idea. And class size and parking and traffic are the top two. Technology, facilities and infrastructure, these next ones are clustered together a little bit more in terms of the number of stars. So let's open class size and just have a look at a few thoughts from that. So this number, I don't know if I mentioned this when we looked at the previous question, but this number here is the number of stars that were assigned to this particular theme, and the number of people who assigned stars. And then, of course, it's broken down. It doesn't necessarily add up, these numbers, these numbers in this section don't necessarily, or no, I guess the stars would, sorry, but the people don't necessarily add up to 283, because I may have assigned stars to this thought, and I may have also assigned stars to this thought, so this is looking at the, at more of a unique number of people. So I'll give you a chance to read through some of the thoughts there.
I think the other piece too, just as you dig, as we dig into this, going one level further down is really important, because, for example, when I looked one level below the surface on class size, when we look at it from the district level, it appears that it's a district-wide concern. However, when we dig down one more level, really, the concern is coming out of two, two main buildings, plus a smaller portion of another building. So, you know, I caution us too to be looking, we need to take the district results with a grain of salt, but it also here shows us, we have some room to talk with people about class size, and, you know, what does, how do you actually reduce class size? What are the impacts in other parts of the system? How much benefit do you get when you add just one or two FTE to a building to all? What are the other factors that may play into it? So, Chris and I have been talking today about a handful of these issues, and it really sparked some pretty cool things for discussion with people about the issues that they brought up. So, it is, there's other levels below this, and I just want to really make sure people know that.
Noel, ask a question?
Go ahead, Noel.
Can I ask a question from here?
Yeah.
Is there a way to ask a what-if question? For example, it seems to be class size and taxes are sort of opposite ends of the same scale. It may be that the trade-off for class size is acceptable without raising taxes, or vice versa. Is that a question that can be somehow asked in this survey?
Were you able to hear that, Jen?
Sorry, I was muted for a moment.
Okay.
I was answering.
Oh, okay, all right, very good.
You just couldn't hear me.
That was a great answer.
Yeah. So, that is an excellent question. So, we have not done that type of analysis on this data, but we do have, we do have a tool we call our cohort analysis. And what it does is, it doesn't necessarily, you know, decide, we don't necessarily decide in advance, oh, let's look at class size versus taxes. But what it does is it pulls out some of the key groups of people that are responding similarly to questions, and it lets us understand what the sort of groups of people are with special interests, for example. And then we can, we can look at that, and we can look at, you know, how people shift from the thoughts that they contribute, and the themes of the thoughts they contribute as compared to what they starred, and so we can actually see the learning that sort occurs. So that's something we can definitely talk about, if that's something you're interested in seeing, and going, digging a step deeper in the analysis and looking at that.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, this is Steve here, just wanted to add to that. There is a theme there around funding and budget. I don't see anything in there on the surface that's specifically talking to tax rates. So that's another thing. If people aren't talking about it, the only thing that's mentioned there is they feel that the school is well-funded, the district is well-funded, so I don't know that that, I don't know if there's that polarity there that you're asking about or not, in what we're seeing in the results. So that would be something you could, you could certainly look through, but what I've seen in the results, I haven't seen that as a, as a major theme coming up, for sure.
And we can, in terms of next steps, if you, you know, if you have further dialogue amongst yourselves, we are happy to have further discussion with Matt and Chris about what you're interested in seeing, and looking at what, what the possibilities are from our end. So I did, this is, I've opened up the theme around funding and budget, just to give you an idea of a few of the thoughts there. And if you look at the total number of stars for this theme, we're looking at, you know, 248 stars assigned versus the concerns around class size and parking and traffic, which are over 1,000. So it's a lower level of concern for people, at least on sort of the day-to-day level. That might change if there was a bond coming up, of course.
And I think as we look at these, the responses or the thoughts are all really clustered around either fees or fundraisers, not taxes. So, you know, I, we want to be really careful about trying to make some kind of leap from what I think these, these thoughts are about, as opposed to saying, well, in broader terms, these are people who want to keep the cost down.
So I have a question, if I don't hear me, what's the maximum number of people, if you divided these kind of sort of evenly around people to give stars to? So, what would be considered a high, the highest number that we could possibly see? Okay, there we go.
That's a good question. So I have a, I have the third tab open here, and I have included the thoughts without theming. And so, for some reason, it's, I'm just going to refresh this. It's extending beyond my screen for some reason. I'm not sure what's happening, but for some reason...
I think if you just reduce the view a little bit, you know?
Well, it's...
I mean, you're, you're a command of mine, or, yeah, there you go. It'll be harder to read, but it'll fit.
Yeah. So, this, this web report is the third link in the PDF file that you were sent, and this has all of the thoughts not themed. And what it does is it allows you to sort of see, see the top thoughts that rose to the surface. So, 21 is the highest number of people that assigned stars to a thought in the, in the whole process, all of the people who participated. One of the things, one of the questions we do get asked, and I think it's worth having this conversation, is that so many people participated, 21 seems like such a small number. And when we look at the number of thoughts that, that are submitted, we can only give people a selection of the thoughts to view. So each, for each question, when you participated, you would have seen 27 thoughts, you would have seen three screens with nine thoughts on each screen for each of the questions. And so, the, so the number is, you know, based on, you know, the number of people who were viewing, viewing the question. It's not that 1,000 people saw the question and only 21 people responded. Not everyone saw the question. In the appreciates question, the highest number is 25, so the top thought under the appreciates question is, was 25 people. I also did want to take a minute to go into the questions, the questions question, we call it, which was, what questions do you have about our school or district? And I'm going to keep it in this unthemed, unthemed view, which will allow us just to look at the top questions. And you'll see that the number of people for these thoughts are higher. And that is primarily because the total number of thoughts submitted for this question was lower. So people saw the thoughts more frequently than they saw the, each of the individual thoughts for the concerns and appreciates question. Does that make sense? So fewer, fewer responses to the question were provided. Each person still saw 27 thoughts, so the thoughts were seen in this question more times than in the other questions. So that's another point, is look at the thoughts within each question and compare the number of people that way, but don't compare the number of people across questions, because different number of thoughts were submitted, so the questions were seen, or sorry, the thoughts were seen a different number of times within each question.
And what we really like about the questions question, is that it gives us some very, when you're thinking about the other thoughts, it comes from a different angle or perspective. The questions are things that are questions to us that we can answer. So, you know, we look at a number of these around class size, we can, we can put together a communication tool to explain to people what our class size strategies are and those kinds of things, things around parking, or other kinds of things that are, come up as those large questions. We envision putting together a frequently asked questions piece after this, as we get through it, to be able to share with the community, say, hey, here's what you asked about, and here is how we can respond to it at this time. So it really makes a direct piece to people that, hey, I participated this, and here's what the district is able to tell me about it. We think that that's going to build trust, and it's going to show that we're taking those questions seriously. It's actionable, is what I like about it.
Jen, I think in the end, though, the, the idea with this is that you have the ability to drill as deep as you want to drill, but you also have the ability to use the theme piece to get the broader perspective of what people are. Like on the, on the sheet you're showing us right now, the first seven thoughts are all about the same issue. And, and so, all of them would have been captured in the class size theme. So I think, I think the advantage of the theming piece is that when you objectively identify themes and then are able to cluster thoughts there, it helps us to get the weighting that I think people are saying, you don't really have... weighting that I think people are saying, you don't really have, and nobody sees more than 27 thoughts in, in the course of, of reviewing the star step. Am I making sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions that people might have?
Good question.
So there's no password, we can go on and play?
Right, you can, yeah.
You can go in and play.
That's right, yeah. The other thing I would add, just as a side note to add to the conversation, is that each of the schools also has a web report and it includes all of the thoughts for that school that were starred. So this gives the top thoughts for each school, but you can also, the schools will each have their own web report that shows all of the thoughts that came out of their building. So it gives, it gives us, you know, a bigger picture at each of the school level reports as well.
I have a question. This is more to Chris and Matt. When is this being released to staff?
So Jen will talk about that in the next steps. We, we wanted to show it to you first. You know, we basically started with Chris and I getting the preview. We had our expanded district administrative team probably three weeks ago, two weeks ago, that got to see what you saw tonight in terms of that, we actually spent an hour with it. Before we went any further, we wanted to share it with you. After you've had a chance to take a look at it for a little bit, we're going to go ahead and release it, you know, those, the rest of the pieces to not only the staff, but to the public. And again, the intent, this is very different because, you know, we're not putting value on anything that's there already. It's really what does the community value? What are the people who participated in the processes value? And that's our, our hope is that it sparks some conversation and an opportunity for learning. As you read through the thoughts, there will be some that you will say, oh, well, we can answer that just like this because this individual just doesn't have enough information or maybe they haven't heard this piece before. There are some other things that will create some big questions, which I like big questions because that gives us some clarity in what we need to attack in the future in terms of making sure that parents and teachers and all the people who participated are on the same page. It's, it's a good piece. It is a shift to change thinking from, it is a survey to a conversation. Because the first couple of times I looked at the concerns, I was like, oh, these are negative. Well, no, they're not. They're people's points of view and we just need to consider it. It's, it's like sitting across the table with someone and disagreeing without being disagreeable. So I, I invite you to take that approach to it. Don't look at the, the, the appreciates as good and the concerns as bad. There are some appreciates that actually could come off as not so good and vice versa. So, and again, I think the more important piece to me than all of this are the questions. Because again, those are things that we can really be actionable with, which is a, a positive place to be.
So I just wanted to, so maybe we'll go on to that next steps piece, but before I did, I just wanted to show you the last, it's the first link in the PDF file. And it's the last way to filter it. So you have the ability to filter by demographics. So if you want to see, you know, just what staff members were saying or parents or guardians, you can filter by, by that item and then view the report based on, so this is just thoughts from parents. So, or just thoughts, yes, just thoughts that were starred by parents. So I'm going to, I'm going to leave the web report here because they're interesting to look at, but they're much more interesting to look at on your own when you have a chance to really read through the thoughts. I just wanted to go through them to, you know, to give you sort of a big idea of what's there and how to, how to look at the report.
So I have a question. Is beyond just the piece we saw, I think district-wide analysis summary theme, is there any more sort of high-level executive summary pieces that will be done off from this as well?
So Jen, she's asking, you, you do not provide the, an executive summary, but that is something that I can, I can easily write in terms of just putting some of the demographic pieces together. But again, I think the key piece is that it's intended to generate conversation, not necessarily conclusions right away. So I will be very careful as to not write something in a way that leads people down one path or another. And that's.
And maybe that's not even appropriate at this point. I was just asking the question, so it, you know, I would, I would defer to your opinion on that.
But I do think a kind of a paragraph about what Jen started with, the number of people who participated, how that compares to other conversations that we've had with the community. I think that that kind of higher level participation piece and then maybe even those pieces that we've discussed about, you know, resist looking at this as a survey and people voted for this stuff, it's really about the conversation component.
Okay, alright, if that makes sense, thank you.
Well, and I think the other real key is that even within the theme component that you have, you have so many different ways you can slice and dice that data to figure out if people who are concerned about a particular element or are appreciative of a particular element fall into a particular group of folks. And, and then, you know, the, the one piece that I heard tonight, Jen, that I haven't heard before is that there might also be the potential to look at correlations of peoples, people who have certain thoughts correlated with other thoughts that they might have at some point in time if we see something we really want to go after and take a look at.
And I can reach out to our analysis team this week and see sometimes, sometimes those things come out of the data and sometimes they aren't there. So it just depends what the, what the data shows.
We don't want to create a correlation that doesn't exist, no.
Well, I think the other piece too is that what's, this is our first foray into this. And as I watch some of you, I think you see there's some real potential here. And remember that we are committed to doing this, this join the conversation, or as the internal thought exchange lingo is, the weather report. We plan to do this the next two years as well. So I think it will be very fascinating after we take this information, because it's important to get information out of the data, and as we get to address some of the pieces that have come forward, how that will change, what we will see differently next year, if there are things that are the same that we might not have yet completely addressed. So I, I think that's going to be fascinating in that weather report piece. And then just also remember that we have the ability to do it in what's called an issue-oriented thought exchange. And we are actually planning to do that, as we said all the way along, we are working with thought exchange to get the second one up around facilities. And we're anticipating that that will kick off in early March and spanning March and April essentially to do those pieces. And now that we've been through this once, I think that people who participate now know how to use it. It's not a, this ethereal kind of thing. They've been through it, they know how to do it. And we're really excited to be able to get that engagement around, specifically around facilities.
I'm, I'm going to advance to the next slide and I'm going to go back to the question around executive summary and talk about our results website. In some ways, the results website, which I'm hoping to have a draft of to Matt and Chris tomorrow, is, is a bit of an executive summary. So it, it does what you're talking about in terms of showing the number of participants and the number of thoughts and stars that were assigned. It talks about the top, the, the top thoughts overall in the district. And it also, we talk about curated thoughts. So we look at each of the schools and give sort of a summary of the top thoughts for each question at each of the schools. And it, it's a way to look at sort of the big picture without having to open up the web reports and, and look into those. We do share, we do share a web report through the website as well. It is a themed web report, but we do not include the filters typically. So we wouldn't include the ability to filter by school or filter by parent or guardian or staff. It's, it's just the generic version. And so we are working with Matt and Chris right now, while we've been building the website, but then also talking about how, how do the results get rolled out to the public? And as Matt talked about earlier, we have had a few meetings already. You know, we're having this meeting with you and then we will be working with Matt and Chris to determine, you know, next steps and how that gets shared out. And we can do some things on our end, for example, sending out an email to the people who participated with the link to the web report. And then of course, there'll be other things on your end as well, posting the results website through the Northfield Public Schools website and that type of thing. So there will be a, a sort of phase rollout of the results, is what we're working on. Any other questions about that?
Well, I just want to, I want to tell the board that Thought Exchange was just great to work with during this entire process. Very responsive, really listened to what our questions and concerns were and really helped us navigate this process. If you think about how many messages went out and all those kinds of things, you know, Thought Exchange really did those pieces for us. And obviously you can see we got a tremendous amount of participation. So thanks to Jen and Steve. And we finally got them to call it process as opposed to process.
We have trained them pretty well, I think, on process.
Do board members have any other questions?
You're interrupting me from speaking Canadian.
Yeah. Aye? Okay.
So do board members have any other questions? I just wanted to comment, Matt, when you said about the, the information that goes out. I have been really impressed with the communication and the way it's been presented to, to parents and, and the staff. I think the, it's just really well-presented and I think that's obviously a testament to the responses. So this is really exciting.
We're, we're really excited to see, you know, as this now goes back out to the community so that they can see the results and, and, because one of, I think, the powerful things, Jen, that, that I saw in doing this, and actually, you know, I, I participated in ours, also participated, I think, as I told you and Steve earlier, that I participated in another one for a national organization that I belong to. And I don't know if we articulated this, but you do have a way that actually makes sure that your thoughts, if you have thoughts, usually float back into those thoughts that you are starring?
The thought that you submitted.
So in other words, if I have a thought submitted, one of the 27 thoughts that I'm going to have an opportunity to star are my own. So I think it's, it's a real powerful message to the community that not only, you know, do you have the ability to, to put, put stars and emphasis on particular issues, but that your comment, your share is honored as being one that's important. And if now, as you look at that among the 27, you say, I still have real strong feelings about that and I want to, I want to let you know that, they have the opportunity to share that at a high level with the number of stars on it to support that element. So, and, and that's something, again, that, that I have not seen any other kind of survey or opinion element that gives us that kind of capability. So very much appreciated.
Well, we have taken up more than the half an hour we said we would.
We're, we're good at extending our time usually, so.
Thank you Jen, thanks Steve.
Thank you too.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Any other comments you want to add to, or should we move, do you want to move on?
I think we can move on unless anybody else has a question.
Then we will move on. To items for individual action, the first being the resolution requiring administration to make recommendations regarding programming and staffing next year. And something we do each year, Dr. Richardson?
Yes, and that is exactly what I would say to you, is this, this resolution is done at this time each year. It basically allows us to have a process, not a process, but a process for needing to make adjustments in terms of programming or staffing for the following year. This, it needs to come out at this time. This is an alert to the community, but also an alert to our various bargaining units that there may be those issues. Right now, we do not believe that we are probably going to be looking at any kind of staff reductions or modifications based on our current budget and so on. But this also always gives us the opportunity to do that if we should see the need to make those modifications. So I would recommend your approval of that resolution. And again, it is a resolution. I don't believe, I think people have heard that resolution many, many times now.
So if the board is comfortable to make a motion to approve the resolution as stated, moved by Noel, second, second by Ellen, discussion or questions? Okay, as a resolution, this is also a roll call vote. Aaron?
Bogut.
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Colangelo?
Yes.
Quinell?
Yes.
Stratman?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item for individual action is the School Board Policy 808 Key Access Control, of which we had the first reading at our last meeting. Dr. Richardson?
And again, remember that this is the policy, which gives us the broad ability to deal with the issuance, surrender, replacement of both metal keys, the traditional ones, or identification badges. And basically, it directs us as the administration to create the procedures that go with this. And again, the, the core of the discussion here is simply putting together a policy that helps people to understand that we do need to have control over the access to the building and that if keys are lost or misplaced, that we do need at least some authority to request payment or partial payment for the cost of rekeying locks, depending on the number of locks that are compromised.
Okay. Is, this is an item for individual action, is there a motion to approve School Board Policy 808 Key Access Control as presented? Moved by Ellen, second, second by Rob. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were just a few personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Margaret, second, second by Ellen. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on. We have four items for information, two of which were in your table file. The first being Charter School Authorizer Corrective Action Planning. Dr. Richardson?
As I had been sharing with you over the last several months, we are in the process of being renewed as a charter school authorizer. Again, we were in the, the second wave or cohort of individuals going through. Of the cohort, there were four, what we'd call single-purpose authorizers. That would be private entities that basically authorized charter schools as a part of their business model. And two public schools. So Northfield Public Schools and Shisago Bakes Public Schools. As we had shared some concern with you earlier, there were several areas in terms of the renewal process where the third-party evaluator said, we are not comfortable with the approaches that you are taking, or we don't think you have enough information, or you need a process that is more detailed. And so what we are in the process of doing right now is moving into corrective action. What will happen with that is we actually had the meeting on the corrective action planning process on the first of February, the one day last week that was halfway reasonable. But that also starts a clock, so we have 20 business days now to create a corrective action plan. And so that'll be the first piece that we're going to be working on is the corrective action plan. And then we actually have a year to complete all of the corrective actions that are in place. At the end of the year, if we have, or sooner, when we have those corrective actions taken, then we will be allowed to move forward with then renewing and going forward with a new authorizer plan. As Matt and I have talked about this and as we've worked on this and as we've shared thoughts with the third-party folks, while there's some areas where it was very clear to us that there were things that we could probably do in more detail, other pieces, especially in the A section of this document, seem not to favor public schools. And the interesting thing, obviously, going through the process, the two authorizers that are in corrective action right now are the two public schools. And the other four are not in corrective action. And a piece of that, and especially in the A section, are concerns that were expressed about, do we know how to support curriculum instruction, finance, payroll, HR? do we know how to support curriculum instruction, finance, payroll, HR, et cetera? And do, do we have those experiences? And are, are we, as administrators in this district, evaluated by the board or superintendent or supervisor to do that work? And we were actually in both of those areas given a not satisfactory score. And so, part of it, as we see it, is they are looking for a lot more detail. Part of it, as we see it also, is I think there is a innate bias in terms of the way the structure of the process is set up towards not necessarily addressing or giving public schools a chance to demonstrate what we do on an everyday basis. Because if you think about it, Matt and I, Val, Mary, others, we do this for a living and we've all done it for many, many years. And so, the, the commentary of saying that you're, you're not approaching satisfactory, you're not satisfactory performance is a little disconcerting. And I've shared some concerns. I've tried to be very professional about the process, except when I go in my, my office and shut the door. And, you know, we are going to do everything we can to become a authorizer, not in corrective action, going forward. We also know that within the last week, we had another authorizer that quit, said they're not going to authorize anymore. So, there's five or six additional charters that now have to go find a new authorizer. So, what seems to be happening now is a diminishing number of authorizers that are going to have to service a larger and larger pool of charter schools that, that need to have authorizers. And so, we'll do everything we can to make this happen. And I, I believe that, you know, we can address it all, but a lot of it, as I see it, is they're expecting a level of detail and a level of checklist and a level of rubric that, that seems to say, as a public school, you don't know how to do this. So, I, tell me when to stop, Matt. You're not sitting close enough. You can kick me under the table.
Yeah, I was going to start going like this. So. I think the bottom line is that a lot of it is very doable. I mean, it really, some of it is really minutia, things that we've actually already addressed in terms of, for just one example that I think is a great one for you to hear is that, you know, we use the school district's mission as part of our application because we believe that that goes to our charter school authorization. That's an area where we are downgraded because our, because our mission doesn't speak specifically about being an authorizer. So, if you think about a difference between a single-purpose authorizer where all they do are authorize charter schools and ours where it's a little bit more broader, global, we basically do not receive credit for that broader goal. So, we have a new mission already written for the authorizer piece. And it also seems that there's some real intent around the way that that is publicly available. Most single-purpose authorizers are looking to authorize anyone. Our authorizer mission is that we will authorize public schools that exist physically within our school district boundaries. So, we've already started to create a section of the website that will really check off these pieces. So, while it isn't fun and, and there are some other things that we could be doing, authorizing our two local public charter schools is something that's been very important to the board for years and to our community for a long time, and we plan to carry the water to get it done. But it is clear, I think, to both of us that intentionally or unintentionally, there is a piece that's making public schools jump through a few additional hoops, which, in my opinion, aren't necessary. But I don't get to make that decision.
And at this point, as we've shared before, we're down to only three school districts in the state that are still authorizing charter schools. So, it's Shisago Bakes, Northfield, and then Winona is the third one, but they're not, they were not in this round of folks. So, they will be coming up in the next round of, of authorization or authorizer renewal. So, we, we just know at this point, there's a, there's an expectation there that I think, again, is driven by a need to have the, the very high level of detail and the very high level of almost checklist of things that have to be done and trying to apply that to school districts that do those jobs every single day of their lives. And, and so, you know, that's, we're going to have to create all the checklist and the pieces that will make them comfortable that we really do know what we're doing.
Margaret, you have questions?
In hearing this, with these authorized hoops that a public school has to jump through to become an authorizer, I'm wondering if intentionally or unintentionally, it's putting the undue burden, not on the public school to provide proof that they could do this, but on the charter school to find qualified authorizers. So, I'm worried that it isn't so much about the school, it's about making charter schools less successful.
It's the double whammy of the fact that if you have less authorizers, then the reduced number of authorizers has to be able to authorize all the charter schools that want to be authorized. And right now, again, with the loss of another authorizer this week, there will be seven more charters or five more charters that are trying to find a new chartering entity. And at the same time, we're going through this process, they are advertising for new authorizers.
Yes, I'm, I'm just worried that it makes, it, it makes success of a charter school that much harder as well.
I think, I think it does. I think, you know, we, we've had, in this district, at least the entire time I've been here, have, have taken this on as, as, you know, our, our role as far as providing choice, providing the greatest opportunities for choice that we can. And again, that's what we're going to make every effort to try to get done. But I, you just need to be aware that there's, there's a significant uphill push to get there.
No. Is, is our continuing to be an authorizer diluting the effectiveness that we have to the, to the taxpayers of the district?
Well. So, I guess here's the concept. The concept is, all the kids that go to the charter schools, for the, for 99% of them, they're also parents living in the district, paying taxes in the district.
Yes.
So, you know, my, my sense is, in the same way that we have a relationship with the parochial schools in the community and try to do some things that will support, you know, all the kids, there, there is, I think, an inherent desire on the part of our school district to try to support whatever choice parents make. I think the, the issue on the flip side, Noel, is the fact that if we take a look at the number of hours we've already spent to do the initial renewal, the number of additional hours we spent to do the response when they first came back to us and said, "There are these areas that are problematic," and now to do an additional one-year corrective action work to try to get us back to that point, there, there is a law of diminishing return in terms of the amount of effort that we can take to do that and what that does at the same time. Because that's, I mean, that's what we're kind of running into right now, is if we think about all the things we're trying to get done, this is just one more new thing on the plate that we, we have, have to work with. And, you know, we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that, that we make that happen. But it doesn't diminish the, the expanded list of things that we have to do.
You have a follow-up question, Noel or Jen?
Well, go to Jen first.
You know, kind of more blue sky, and I think everybody here maybe would agree or disagree with this. But, I mean, you know, you always have the choice between the metro and the outstate. And obviously, if we just did it per pupil and we picked a number and did equalization and gave the student a lot of choice, that would, that would make a lot of sense. But obviously, the, the powers that be, you know, are not making the charter schools easy, easy to do. So, it's just, I mean, obviously, that, that's, there's, there's a motive behind that to make it too difficult, even to make it work, which I think is, you know, not good because that doesn't contribute to student choice.
Well, and remember that as a, as a state, we have probably the broadest choice process probably in the entire country in terms of, with open enrollment, a student can go to any school that they want to go to. They can go to any charter school that they want to go to. Not me. And so, I think that the thing that we're, we have right now is we've got a broad set of choices. When we think about when charter schools were first developed, the relationship of the charter school to the school district, when we had a lot more school districts that were sponsors, was a very supportive role. You know, what can we do to help you? How can we support you if you call and say, "I've run into a, a discipline issue I've never dealt with before. Can you help me through it? I'm running into a HR problem. I'm running into a curriculum issue. I'm running into a assessment process." Well, then, you know, we have the ability in the school district to marshal resources of our, of our district assessment coordinator, our HR director, our curriculum and instruction person, all of whom can provide support back. What has happened that's really changed, and it changed with the implementation of authorization instead of sponsorship, is that really the Department of Education has stepped back and said, "As an authorizer, you are going to be, be making the decision as to whether a charter school stays or goes." Before that, basically, in the end, the department was the one that had the responsibility for determining whether charter schools continue to function or not. And I think in, in doing that, in terms of, of letting go of that authority at, at MDE, they put a lot more pressure on authorizers to do not only the support role that we've tried to do all along, but to do the compliance role, where we're saying, you know, "We need to make sure that you're complying with all the requirements that the state has." And that comes back to the fact that, you know, over the last five or six years, there's been a handful, and I really would say, a very small number, but of charters who have either failed because they couldn't manage their budget, spent all their money, failed because they tried to, to run a school that had religious motives and religious undertones and, and basically, the charter doesn't have the ability, or shouldn't have the ability to do that as a public school. Or they, they really struggled because they just didn't have the operational management skills to, to make that happen. The great thing we've had is, obviously, the two charters that we have that are currently in place do a great job. The third party charter that was there here when I came here did not do a great job. And so, we made the purposeful decision, but when we went to close that charter, we had to have the Department of Ed make the final decision. And then, we had to go with the Department of Ed, both to the district court and the appellate court, to, to uphold the closure of that particular building. So, it's, things have changed.
Noel, you had a follow-up question?
I think Chris pretty much answered most of it, but it does seem that, that the, it seems like the funnel is turning the wrong direction. It, it seemed like the criticism, the measure of the performance is not a criticism of, of the charter schools, but a criticism of the authorizing, the ability of the authorizing school to be able to meet all the cross, you know, to, to meet all the,
Dot all the i's, cross all the t's.
Dot the i's and cross the t's. And it would seem like they haven't moved the goalpost, they haven't changed the, they, they haven't changed the goalposts. They just put them in a different place. For that metaphor, there's probably several in that conversation there, but.
Is that a Super Bowl metaphor?
Board members who have other questions?
I just had a quick question about the 20, the corrective action plan that we have a very short window to, to produce. I know we've talked about volumes and volumes of paper in the past. Is that a really tight report to produce in this next 20 days or is that going to be hundreds of pages?
No, everything we've seen is the corrective action report seems to, to be about 10 to 15 pages. So, it's, it's a doable piece. Now, what ends up as the result of that corrective action report in terms of all the additional checklists or other kinds of things that they're, they're expecting could, again, be hundreds of pages of additional documentation.
And do you still have to deliver that personally?
Don't, don't know.
Email it, remember.
Everything else, right now, they're emailing, letting me email to them.
By 11:59 PM though.
Yeah, but everything that we deal with right now is at 11:59 PM on the day it's due. So, we have till, I think, the 29th of February. We have a leap day this year, so that's good. We have till the 29th of February at 11:59 PM to get it.
And they have three business days to acknowledge that they got our piece.
If there's any other questions? Thank you for your efforts with us. Absolutely, we appreciate the update. And of course, look forward to it more. So, we'll move on to the 2015 Calendar Snow Make-Up Days. Dr. Richardson, as a point of clarification?
Yes, just, this is just as a point of clarification. Remember, back on February the 23rd of 2015, we approved the 2015-16 calendar. In that calendar, we said, "We can miss two days without having to make up snow days." But on day three, we will begin making up snow days, and we will make them up the week of the 6th of June. So, right now, our, if we have no more snow days between now and the end of the, of the winter, we're done on the 8th. If we have another day lost, the last day will be the 9th. If we have another day lost, the last day will be the 10th. And we have the possibility of a final snow make-up day on the 13th of June. So, I just want to make people aware that that's there. Obviously, this calendar's been out now for a year. And, you know, people need to understand that. That's district canceled.
The 13th is for teachers only.
Yes, ma'am.
The 13th, yes.
Yeah, so, really, the total number of student days that we're going to get will be two more. If we, if we lose two more before the end of the year. And we will have an additional make-up day for teachers only, which would be on the 13th. So, just want to make people and remind people that that's sitting out there. Brittany already asked kind of that question in terms of that, but this is the detail of that answer, is that we are, we are there because we have, we have lost two days.
The 14th was bolded, but that's meaningless?
Yeah, I'm not even sure why the 14th is bolded. Okay, there's nothing happening on the 14th.
So, the students could go to the 10th of the month?
But the students could go to the end of, of the first full week of gym.
Board members, other questions?
I would like to thank Brittany for that extremely timely article in the Northfield News. I think it came off the press when Matt and Chris were in the snowbank waiting for trucks.
Yes, along with Barb.
Along with Barb from Benjamin Buck.
Yes, so there were all three of us in the snow drift in various places.
Okay, two new items for individual action. Excuse information that came in your table file, discipline policies and procedure work session follow-up.
Okay, and as you know, we've not sent out an additional doodle poll because at least as we had kind of looked through the dates between now and the 7th of March, we didn't have any time when everybody would be there. And we know that we have two people that will not only not be around, but will be out of town the end of February or the beginning of March. The only thing I wanted to check on, and otherwise, we will wait till Demi comes back and send another doodle poll out, is that we do have one day, the 16th of February, where we only have, excuse me.
I think it's 16th of March.
No, it is the 16th of February.
Oh, it is.
The 16th of February where, Margaret, I know you had a conflict. And so, the only question I had before we kind of say, "Well, we just need to wait till after the 7th of March," is just to have, to see if there are any possibilities of you adjusting that February 16th date. Because if there is, then we would be able to get all the board members here and.
D-PAC that night, but.
Yeah.
Am I the only one on March 7th? Because I, my flight might be in earlier in the day.
Is that 5:00 PM you're talking about?
Yeah, that's a, that's a 5:00 PM.
March 7th is a Monday.
You see, my conflict on the 16th is one of my committees. So, you know, given the issue, if it would be okay if I missed my committee meeting in lieu of this work session, that would be work.
I, I hadn't thought, however, about D-PAC. And how many of us are on D-PAC?
Well, the 16th wouldn't be D-PAC because that's a Monday. No, 16th is a Tuesday. 16th is a Tuesday, so that wouldn't affect D-PAC.
Yeah, I, I thought the 16th was fine.
The 15th was.
The 15th was likely DPAC.
Yeah, when you said that, I was going, "I don't think..."
One day off.
One day off. Did the Apple Watch...
No, it didn't.
Fall to you? Okay, I'll just double-check.
I'm already on tomorrow's date.
So, you know, that would be the only other option. If there's an interest in doing that, we could actually have another work session on the 16th, and move that process along.
If we could just give my committee my excuses, then.
Impressive.
Okay, so, board members, what I'm hearing then is that we'll move forward with February 16th, which is a Tuesday at 5:00 PM. Does that time still work?
If that would work, for folks.
Yeah, I think it's really great that we continue it. As we understand, moving into March, before we know it, spring break, we'll be here, and then it's April, and then we're really...
And again, the frame for that next meeting is, we're going to come back and circle back around on the firearm BB gun definition. Then we will, then we will move into the stacking discussion, about stacking of events to create a more severe punishment. Then we will deal with the expulsion abeyance discussion, because I think those are the next three really important discussions to have as we go forward. And, you know, while I believe, in the end, we have till the end of the school year to get it all figured out, I am sure that administrators would love to have it done sooner than that, so that they know specifically what's going on. So, all right, so I'm going to shoot for the idea that we will look at the 16th of February, if that is okay, Margaret, for you.
Yeah, excellent. All right, thank you. That's good work.
Okay, very good. That's very helpful.
So, we have one other quick update on the SEVSEC.
Yes, very, very quickly, would just give you, I know I sent you several pieces of information out over the weekend on kind of next steps with SEVSEC, including information that Cheryl has been putting together as a Q&amp;A document. And again, things are going to begin to move pretty quickly now. Our expectation is that Laura Baker will be voting on the lease agreement at their next meeting, which I believe is the 11th of February, and then we'll be coming back at SEVSEC to vote on the lease agreement on the 23rd, I believe, because 22nd is their next board meeting, so I think it's Tuesday, the 23rd. So those pieces will get done. We're also trying to move, you know, forward with all the other components and elements of this process, and, you know, I think it's important for board members to know that we're trying to do everything we can to help make sure that community members, and parents, and others know about all the pieces that are there. But there are a lot of moving parts, and, you know, I think the key thing, a key couple of things for you to remember is that we do not have a choice not to create the joint, the new cooperative that replaces the old joint powers agreement. We, and we did have, basically, a belief, and I think Laura Baker and the material that I shared with you is basically saying to you, "We are supportive of trying to move forward with this collaborative effort. It makes good sense. The numbers that they will have will drop to about three or four for next year, which will make it almost impossible for them to run a program on their own. By putting us together, you know, we could have anywhere from 18 to 24 kids total in the program, we're going to infuse a lot of additional trained staff into it, as well as new equipments, and new programming options, and new specialists to help support the program." So we really see this as a great opportunity, not only to provide two different spaces to support our students who have the greatest level of need, which also allows us to separate three of the programs that will stay at Cracker, and the SUN program that will move to Northfield. And so I just want you to be aware of that, and please, if you have any questions as we go forward with this, I will keep trying to feed you all the information I can as we go forward, in terms of those parts. And again, you know, Margaret and I will be, are your loyal servants at the table to work through that process, along with the folks from Faribault. So just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to take a look at those pieces, and I guess just to ask, did you have any questions specifically about the material that I shared with you over the weekend?
I thought it was really excellent to have that additional background.
Okay, because, again, I know that, you know, we have parents that are concerned, and a lot is concerned about the unknown, in terms of how this process is going to go. You know, we're going to do everything we can to provide a high-quality program, and I think we have the potential to create a sustainable program that will meet the needs of kids. And I think if we look at kind of the biggest single issue right now, for Laura Baker being able to stand on its own, is the inability to sustain the program long-term, depending on the numbers of students that they have in place for the fall. Where by putting it together, we'll be able to provide support for a larger number of kids, all of whom have very similar kinds of issues and need similar levels of support. So I think it's all good.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Okay, so that, excuse me, I have some information, excuse me, I'm sorry, Noel.
I think I've got a question. We'll try to frame it as I go here. What is the limit, what is the capacity of what will be at Laura Baker?
We believe initially, the capacity is approximately 24. And, you know, that's because we are not only doing some remodeling of the building, but we're also, because we're going to be sectioning off the lunchroom, which, or the lunch facility, which used to be, I believe, the dining hall for everybody, and now the dining for all the residential individuals is, are out in their cottages. So while they make all the meals in the kitchen, they don't serve them there anymore. And so it's giving us the opportunity to create a very significantly larger, what they would call a large motor room, giving space for kids to stretch and play, and do other kinds of things, as well as, because the kitchen remains, we have the ability to provide hot meals to the kids and to the staff in the building, that otherwise, we would have to transport from another site. So there are just lots of different ways. It ends up being, I think, a positive thing for both the kids and adults.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other questions? Excuse me, we will move on. So, future meetings, we now have established a work session on Tuesday, February 16th, at 5:00 PM. We will assume here in the media center, and people will know if it's not going to work for that day. Then regular school board meetings, Monday, February 22nd, and Monday, March 14th, both at 7:00 PM in the high school media center. So with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Jeff. Second?
Second.
Second by Noel. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries, we are adjourned.